Call a meeting to order. Ms. T, would you call the roll, please?
House, Landville.
Here.
JR, Hennelston.
Here.
Jeffrey Johnson.
Here.
Bill Luthen.
Here.
Travis Lorbeck.
Here.
Larry Frat.
Here.
Linda Barbell.
Here.
Melissa Mayo.
Here.
Thank you. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How quiet is this?
Remember, counsel, if you have a conflict of interest, please let the rest of your counsel know before you vote. Need a motion to approve an amended agenda. The amendment is to remove new business item C. New business item C is a plat of lot S-27R of Boulder Falls Business Park. If you go in your packet to that plat, at the top of the plat, there's a note. An eight-foot utility easements on the lot line common to former lot S-26R and lot S-27 is vacated with this plat. So looking at the plat, there currently are two lots. The south lot is S-27. The north lot is S-26R. So they share that common property line between them. And there's an easement. Currently, there's an easement on that line. So if the easement were to be vacated, then any utilities that currently are in there, the city wouldn't be able to get in and work on them. I asked the water department this morning to confirm whether there's sewer and water in that, on that property line, in that easement. And they confirmed there is, excuse me, sewer line that runs west-east on that property line. So we can't approve it tonight because approving it would vacate the property. So that's why I'm asking to have it removed and we'll get this run back through. Get Anderson engineers to remove that particular note. So that's the only amendment is to remove new business item C.
I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda, removing business item C.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Into our minutes, first one, item A. Can I get a motion to approve minutes from the May 2nd special council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 2nd special council meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Our next minutes, item B. Can I get a motion to approve an amended minutes from the May 6th regular council meeting?
Make a motion to approve the amended minutes from the May 6th regular council meeting, adding and approve to the review and consider the request from, I'm sorry, request from Challenge Dakota Doing Businesses Stars Stripes and Steps.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. T, I believe you had pointed this one out. If you could share with counsel that, why this particular one's in front of them?
I was contacted by Dusty Pence after I sent her the minutes for submission to DOT and she was concerned because the word approved wasn't in the minutes. So I told her we could amend them and get it in here. So you reviewed and acknowledged we're doing an approving.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto claims. Can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
I make a motion to approve the bills in between for $185,774.45.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the current claims?
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $133,294.89. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And our last claim is going to get a motion to approve wastewater purchase of a 2024 Chevy HD 350 truck.
Make a motion to approve the wastewater purchase of a 2024 Chevy HD 3500 truck batch, $69,875.
Second.
And, Misty, could you give an explanation why this one's showing up here?
You told me that. No, it didn't. It checks out of council approval. This was a calamitous error from the get-go on this purchase and we needed to submit the plan. The last year, the thing that was agreed to, ready to go, and the check wasn't included in the last batch. So in order to keep the vehicle not lose it, the mayor gave me permission to create a special batch and send the check out. It came out after the last meeting.
And if council remembers, I gave Misty permission because you gave me permission to give Misty permission. We had two conversations about this truck, the fact that it exceeded the original estimate in the 2024 budget. But the wastewater folks had figured out how they were going to go ahead and fund it and stay within budget. In fact, they're $5,000 under a couple of budget items that got combined. So you gave us approval to go ahead and purchase the truck with the expectation that the bill would be in front of you, and we just didn't get it in front of you the last time. So reached out to all of you and you agreed that when the bill was in front of you, you would approve it. That's why it's here. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Communications from the public, is there anyone who would like to address the council tonight? Don't be shy. All right. We have a 7:10 public hearing. We're just a couple of minutes away from that. Then we have a 7:15. Why don't we go ahead and jump ahead to our personnel actions? If I could get a motion to approve Personnel Actions A through L, and if you read the motion real slowly or recite it, we'll get closer to our 7:10 first public hearing.
I make a motion to approve Personnel Actions Items A through L. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
I abstain because my daughter's on the personnel list.
All right. Did you get that, Misty? Andrea, do you have everything ready to go? All right, so we'll open a public hearing at 7:10. Oh, I'm sorry, Andrea. So we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at 7:10 to act on the license application from the Hot Springs Rotary Club for a special sale alcoholic beverage license application for the Fourth of July Dance Event on July 3rd at Centennial Park, 275 North Garden Street. Is there anyone here that would like to address that? Counsel, do you have any questions?
How many years have they been doing this? That's why nobody's here, because they've done it for years.
Anyone else? All right, we'll round up and close the public hearing at 7:11. Need a motion to either approve, deny, or postpone the license application from the Hot Springs Rotary Club.
I make a motion to approve the license application from the Hot Springs Rotary Club for a special sale alcoholic beverage license application for the Fourth of July Dance Event on 7/3/24 at Centennial Park, 275 North Garden Street. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Okay, Andrea. Sorry about that. We've got another public hearing at 7:15.
Am I? Hello?
So if you're still updating the council at 7:15, we'll ask you to take a pause and go to the second public hearing and then we'll come back to you.
Hi. It's on. Okay. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Nelson, City Council. On May 30th, Western Dakota Technical College had a community stakeholders meeting here in Hot Springs for all of the Southern Hills. There was a rich discussion of local community needs for educational opportunities, discussion around getting more information to high school kids about the advantages and opportunities at Western Dakota Tech, as well as potential relationships and programming for Veterans 20 stakeholders, local stakeholders attended Business Park. I met with Airport Advisory Committee on May 2nd, and I have a meeting with FAA and DOT along with Ivan Venner and Bob Nelson Jr. on May 29th. Black Hills Area Community Foundation Committee Fund. In the fall of '23, Shedco facilitated the development of a housing committee in response to an invitation from Black Hills Area Community Foundation. Having the formalized committee allows us to apply for gap funds from BHAFC for housing projects that involve development intended for community members out or below the 80% AMI for our state. If anybody would like to have a chart of what those current numbers are, I'm happy to send it out. SDSU Landscape Architecture Students were here as part of the Active Transportation Grant we applied for. They surveyed all 402 blocks in the city limits, surveyed a group of stakeholders, and attended Taco Tuesday at the space in order to canvas committee members for the input on infrastructure for increased activity in the town. I have a 42-page hard document of the recommendations, and again, I can send out a digital version of that to anyone who'd like a copy. It is called, the resulting document is the Building Active Transportation in Hot Springs, South Dakota. It was completed by the Landscape Architecture Students at SDSU. Building One, I've continued to create interest in Building One at the State Vets Home by inviting developers to a walkthrough and explanation of the history and our need for rental units. Remote Workers Mastermind Group. In January, I started a mastermind group for remote workers in Hot Springs. We've had four meetings so far, so far, focusing on how remote work requires different management structures and approaches. As the coach, it's been informative for me to listen to people who are embedded in well-established industries who've had to shift to either hybrid or remote work and what their challenges and the gains of doing that have been. Engage, South Dakota. In January, Shedco was asked if Hot Springs would be the West River representative to participate in a project identifying the top local problems and potential solutions throughout the state through a crowdsourcing survey. The initial story will be produced by South Dakota News Watch. The Cheeseman Center for Democracy, Democracy Researchers will use these survey results to guide in-person sessions. I'm having trouble with my S's today.
So?
Sessions, yes. Stop?
Yeah, we'll ask you to pause. Looking for a break there. All right, so we'll open up our 7:15 public hearing to act on the license application from the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce for a special sale alcoholic beverage license application for the Wine Walk and Play Event on May 24th, 2024, at the following locations: The Hot Springs Makers Market, 108 South Chicago Street, at 108 South Chicago Street; Ace Hardware, 207 South Chicago Street; Changing Seasons, 223 South Chicago Street; Second Chances, 603 North River Street; Chautauqua Artisans Market, 629 North River Street; and Scobie Kombucha, 713 North River Street. Is there anyone here from those organizations that would like to speak to the council or anybody in the public that would like to address that? Counsel? Have any questions?
Just a clarification, the wine that's dispensed does need to be consumed at those locations and not walked through the city. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
That's what I kind of want to. So that's a yes?
It's my understanding, it's not my event, not my event to it, I'm sorry.
No, that's my understanding also.
That was my understanding also. I may not have personally complied with that in the past, so it was a reminder to myself and anybody else that might participate.
You know, Bill, in response to your question, I may sound like a terrible person, but that would be nice to, when we do have these things, that people do represent those questions that are being asked, they can answer those questions for us. So just want to put that out there in a nice way.
Thank you, Larry.
I can speak to any questions that you might have. I'm on the chamber board and also the retail committee that puts the event on. If you have questions, and your question, the answer to your question is yes.
Okay, thanks.
And there will be shuttle, a shuttle service with the Prairie Transit this year rather than the Gulf Carps?
I think so. Are you a driver, Larry?
We got two drivers. We're arm wrestling right now to see which one of us wants to do it. But we, but I'm understanding Barb said that there will be, so, yes, yes, sir.
It is a great time to get out and enjoy our new roads and our new sidewalks and meet people in the community or reconnect with people in the community that you may not get to see every day. So it is a great, great opportunity for us.
And just to let the general public know, there will be two stops, one on the one end of the town and one on the south end of the town, and be running back and forth constantly so that if you walk from the south and get to the north, you don't want to walk back, you can catch the shuttle back down to where you originally parked and vice versa.
Right, yep, yep, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you, Brett.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. No questions from the public? All right, let's go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:19. And if I can get a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the license application from the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce for a special sale alcoholic beverage license application.
I'll make a motion to approve the license applications from the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce for a special sale alcoholic beverage license application for the Wine Walk and Play Event on May 24th of '24 at the following locations: Hot Springs Makers Market, 108 South Chicago Street; Ace Hardware, 207 South Chicago Street; Changing Seasons, 323 South Chicago Street; Second Chances, 603 North River Street; Chautauqua Artisans Market, 629 North River Street; and Scobie Kombucha at 713 North River Street.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. All right, Andrea.
So I think I was talking about the Engage, South Dakota process. The initial story after the surveys, or the crowdsourced survey is completed will be produced by South Dakota News Watch, and the Cheeseman Center for Democracy Researchers will use those survey results to guide in-person sessions in each community that will bring together community leaders to discuss how to make solution-driven progress to address those concerns. There are some anticipated issues that will probably bubble up in every community. Those are the lack of and cost of housing, childcare, and the workforce. The goal is to identify the specifics of those problems for those local communities and then share what's being done to address them to a statewide audience in hopes of encouraging collaboration. Project Engage, South Dakota was announced on March 26th at the Cheeseman Foundation Democracy Conference at USD. Stories and in-person sessions will be done from April to September. We haven't been called yet. So Cheeseman has October and November to produce their report. News Watch will publish at least one follow-up story that will summarize the findings. And lastly is the Energize Conference, that's two days away. We have 141 registrants who will be here May 22nd and 23rd for a conference filled with innovations and ideas for increasing quality of rural life in communities across South Dakota. Our speaker is Michael Perry, who is a New York Times bestseller, humorist, and musician. He'll present Meeting Your Neighbors One Siren at a Time as he is a volunteer firefighter in his community of 498. Based on his experience, oh, sorry, attendees will have 14 different breakout sessions to choose from. I passed out the chart of all the options for everyone, an evening of social activities and food, as well as live entertainment with Wild Blue. If you miss the opportunity to register, you can still attend the keynote at the Mueller Center on Wednesday by paying at the door at noon. So anybody have any questions? Sure.
I do. I need a clarification. I'm looking at my calendar and I have Energize for tomorrow and Wednesday. You said Wednesday and Thursday.
It is Wednesday and Thursday, the 22nd and 23rd.
Tomorrow, we get together and get it all together, so the committee does. At 1 o'clock, is that 1?
The SDSU team will be here, extension team will be here, and our team will meet with them and we'll stuff the swag bags sometime after 2 PM. And haul chairs, get together the drinks. The tent will be here for setup at about 10:30 on Wednesday. I believe Bob Nelson Jr. is going to oversee that with the maintenance crew. So. Sorry.
That's fine. All right. Anyone else? Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you.
All right, on to our only resolution of the evening. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2024-11? A resolution to amend the citywide fee resolution?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-11, a resolution to amend the citywide fee resolution, airport courtesy car charges.
Second.
Discussion?
Could you explain how this came about, why we're doing it?
We revised the, as I reported last meeting in the Airport Advisory Committee, the courtesy car policy was revised to just limit the courtesy car usage to four hours only with the purchase of aviation fuel within a 10-mile radius of the airport. So this resolution updates the fee schedule to remove the charges for longer usage of the courtesy car.
And that's just one car, right?
It's all of the courtesy cars.
All the courtesy cars? Okay. And how many are there?
Three.
Okay. It's not the yellow one, is it, truck?
It's not Tweety.
Okay.
Any other questions?
In our packet, we show Resolution 2024-10, and the resolution is 2024-11, but this one, 2024-10, does show the corrections in it, but we do not have a document that says 2024-11.
You approved 10 at the last meeting, and that didn't get changed. So we'll just change that resolution to 11 with this motion, so. It's correct on the agenda and not right on the document.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto our new business items. New business item A, can I get a motion to authorize Hot Springs Police Department Chief Ross Norton to purchase firearm upgrades?
Make a motion to approve or to authorize Hot Springs Police Department Chief Ross Norton to purchase firearm upgrades in an amount up to $27,000 to be paid for by a future supplemental appropriation.
Second.
Discussion? Chief Norton? So as you and I were texting back and forth, you've had, my understanding is you've had a number of conversations with council, so they have an idea of what you're going to be reminding them of, but the biggest benefit to you going over it again is for the public in general to hear what you're proposing.
Yes, sir. So in front of you guys, you have my, I assume you have my proposal there with kind of a breakdown of what we're trying to do.
Yes.
I guess I'll break it into two separate parts. The proposal that I'm requesting is for improvements to our current fleet of city-owned patrol or duty pistols. We own Glock 17 pistols with factory night sights on them, and then we have TLR Streamlight flashlights for those, for those pistols. What I've researched and what I've found is a company up in Rapid that could take those Glock pistols, put them through their machine, and then mount red dot encapsulated sights on those, on those pistols, making them, in my opinion, and a lot of law enforcement officers' opinions, much more proficient, much more accurate than hard iron sights. Some of the benefits to that are accuracy, quicker target acquisition, less need for multiple rounds downrange. With accuracy comes proficiency, comes more hits on target. And then something else to consider, because our current fleet of Glock pistols don't have these bells and whistles, I'll call them, we have multiple officers within our organization who carry their own, personally own firearms. And I've had discussions with other chiefs around the state at the Chiefs and Sheriffs Conference in Deadwood a couple of weeks ago, and this actually came up as a topic of concern for some chiefs because they allow officers to carry their own firearms. And the question comes into effect of, well, who's responsible for the maintenance, the inspection, and, you know, the, trying to think of the right word. Who's responsible for the, that that gun's going to work when it, when it needs to? You know, we have multiple officers with multiple manufacturers carrying different guns, and so theoretically, we would need those guys to be responsible to maintain and work on those guns, whereas if we upgrade our current fleet, every officer will carry the same exact gun. Whereas if we upgrade our current fleet, every officer will carry the same exact gun, the same exact ammunition, with the same exact optics, and the same exact magazines. So one single Glock armor, which we have one, can inspect and maintain all those guns. And in my opinion, the liability falls off the cities of the, or, excuse me, falls off the shoulders of the city because we don't have different people carrying different firearms that we're not inspecting and maintaining. So that's kind of my spiel about the pistols. Does anybody have any questions up to this point? I would have to check because we have five who currently don't. So part of the implementation would be that we've supplied these guns with these encapsulated sights and the holsters that they would be expected to carry them, and there would be no discussion about that. They would carry them for sure. Anybody else got any questions? Okay. So the next portion of my proposal is rifles. We have duty rifles currently. They are VPMS Panthers, some of which have 16-inch barrels, some of which have 18-inch barrels. They have Eotech red dot sights on them, which have fantastic optics. However, the length of these guns and the fact that there's a single red dot on them give me some concerns. The overall length of the guns that we currently have on our fleet at full expansion is 36 and 1/2 inches long. As many of you know, you know, I like to use trailer park or trailer house dimensions, you know, 30-inch, 28-inch doors. We've been in and out a lot of those lately, clearing buildings for squatters, for burglaries, residential burglaries and everything like that. And we've got officers going in to clear these buildings with these 37 or 36 and 1/2-inch guns. And the safety of our officers, in my opinion, is in effect right now because the overall length of these guns, and they're not suppressed as well, exceeds the overall width of a lot of these doorways and these buildings that we're searching. So a proposal that we've looked into is going to short-barreled rifles. The rifles that we're looking at right now are 10 and 1/2-inch barrels. They come equipped with hard iron sights. And we would transition our current red dot optics onto the new rifles. So we would have a primary sight. And then if for any reason that failed, we would have backup sights that came with the rifles. The rifles that we've got quoted also have a lifetime warranty on them, meaning any manufacturer defects, and it actually includes wear and tear. So if for any reason something happens in the field, if anything happens in the patrol vehicle, as far as they get marred up or beat up in a patrol vehicle, we contact them, they send them out, they send out a new one. We also have critical use replacement with this quote, which means, God forbid, if an officer's involved in a officer-involved shooting and DCI or another entity takes possession of that firearm for evidence, you contact them, they ship you a brand-new one. So, I mean, as it currently lies, we have, I don't know the exact age of our rifles, but when Officer Richardson was here, he did inspection of all the rifles. He was our armorer at the time. And he found that a couple of them were inoperable due to bad barrels. So we've actually got a couple that are out of service at the moment. And then included in this proposal would be suppression. We've looked at Lane suppressors out of Rapid City to see if they could provide us with suppressors for our new rifles. And there's been some communication about, yeah, you're going to buy a short-barreled rifle, but now you're going to throw a suppressor on it so you're actually gaining any advantage. And in my opinion, the added advantage of suppression is paramount. The guns would actually be shorter overall length by about two inches from what we currently possess, and they're fully suppressed. So you get a shorter rifle with suppression, so now disorientation, you know, loud volume is no longer a factor inside a residence if, you know, if the round gets shot off while we're conducting a search or anything like that. There's also been some questions as to, can this wait? Can this wait until next year? Can we put it in our budget for '25? And my request is that we do this as quickly as possible for a couple of reasons. The current climate, as things are going right now, we've had a lot of these high priority, high-stress, dangerous calls recently, and they're not decreasing, they're increasing if anything. I know it's not here, but, you know, Custer County, we had a homicide a couple weeks ago, the same day we had a shooting in town, or just outside of town here. When I gave my initial presentation to the Public Safety Committee, the eight shifts that I worked prior to that day, my gun was out of my holster. And, you know, some people might say, well, was that completely necessary? And I'll tell you, I've gone years without ever pulling it out on shift, and I did it eight consecutive days in a row. So I just want to outfit our guys with the best tools that they can use to make sure that they go home at the end of their shifts. I hope they never have to use them, but I'd rather have them and not need them than need them and not have them. So that's what I've got for you guys.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, help unconfuse me here. You got $26,282 for that. And over here, I'm seeing a 5,000 number for your Black Mirage covers. I mean, is this, I mean, is all this inclusive together? What?
Yeah, so the total project cost would be, of what I have quoted at this moment, is the 26,282-76. That includes the milling, the red dots, the rifles, the slings, the flashlights. That's top to bottom total project cost.
Okay.
Did I answer your question? Sorry.
Yeah, it makes sense. I just wanted to hear it again.
And along those lines, Larry, the reason I had asked to up to 27,000, these were the quotes at the time that the chief got them. If counsel approves the purchases, I just want to make sure, you know, go back and during the actual purchase that maybe a price hasn't gone up, so that there's enough there to fund it.
Okay.
So that's the reason for the up to 27, which is higher than totals that he's come up with. Anyone else on council?
Discuss the appropriation again. You were mentioning maybe taking from somewhere else and using this? Like from vehicles?
Yeah, just the unassigned fund balance.
Oh.
We actually split our supplemental appropriations into two times a year because it requires ordinance. So you'll, at your second meeting in June with this counsel, will approve the first reading, the first one with all the things you approved up until, which would include this if you do tonight. And then the new counsel that starts gets to approve the second reading to understand what you approved that wasn't budgeted for the year. And then we do it again at the end of the year. So we kind of bottleneck them together because it is two readings, publication of passage. So you're approving it now that you won't approve the actual supplemental appropriation until the first, the second meeting in June and the first meeting in July.
I guess I'd just like to say, I appreciate, you know, anytime we look at a supplemental appropriation of this size, it's uncomfortable, but I appreciate the chief paying attention to the environment that he and his officers have to work in. In, when you, when you look at incident investigations, when you look at near-miss investigations, you look at preventive action and corrective action. Preventive action is when you do inspections and audits and you identify hazards and you say, what can I do to prevent that from, that hazard from manifesting? And I believe that's what the chief has done here. He's identified issues before they've happened in order to prevent them. My belief is if, if we don't take the prompt action that he's asking for and something did happen, we would be right back here looking at the same corrective action. Looking at the same activities, the same equipment upgrades. So anytime you can address a hazard before it manifests, you're money ahead. You've avoided the liability, you've avoided the loss. And so, in my opinion, again, we've put the chief in a leadership position and we've asked him to do leadership things, and I think he's done that. So thank you, chief, for doing that.
Thank you.
And then the other implication is that these rifles will be with us for a long, long time, right? Based on manufacturers standing behind them.
Yep. And they're designed specifically for law enforcement, and like I said, the critical use replacement and the lifetime warranty. Yeah.
I appreciate you taking care of your team, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you ask how the WAF will ensure about how long do you estimate that these?
Oh, I mean, the lifetime of the rifle. So I guess I would have to contact manufacturer to see what they deem to be the life. But I would say, I don't want to say forever, but yeah, I would say a decent amount of time.
And then what are our plans with the certification?
That's, Travis asked me that question today, and I'm open to whatever. I was a little leery. They offered a, some of, I guess I should say, some of the vendors that we've talked to have offered to purchase our fleets from us, but they're for pennies on the dollar. So I didn't think that was the most responsible way to do it. In this quote, I guess I didn't mention that, I apologize. At the very bottom, there's rifle training bolts. So two of the rifles I would like to turn in, of our current fleet, excuse me, the, two of our current rifles I would like to buy these training bolts for, and we convert them from functional rifles into training rifles so we can have them at our disposal for, you know, force-on-force training. And then the remaining fleet, we could surplus, we could, yeah, auction, we could, I'd be open to whatever.
And what about the ammunition? Do they use the same?
Yes. Yep, same caliber, so everything that we have currently will transition.
Now, we need you to stick around to remember the lifetime warranties and where they are paid for these weapons, because I believe that we talked about these same things with our last gun purchases.
Absolutely. It's a plan.
I recently viewed an investigation about police surplus arms. And there's, I don't have the specific numbers off the top of my head, but in the last year or so, over 50,000 of them have ended up in criminals' hands because of the way we get rid of our surpluses. So I would like you to take that into consideration when you're viewing and deciding what to do.
Absolutely.
Because that just shouldn't be happening.
Anyone else? Is anyone in the public that has any questions?
I would like to, thank you.
Gary? Gary, could you come down and give us your name and address, please?
Gary Tellkamp, 441 South 60. I'd like to thank the chief for addressing some of the questions.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Teague, would you call the rule, please?
How's Landville?
Here.
Yes or no?
Yes or no? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Travis Lormack?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Bill Leaking?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Melissa Niles?
Yes.
Linda Marvell?
Yes.
The motion passes. On to new business, item B. Can I get a motion to review and acknowledge the Fall River County agreement?
I make a motion to review and acknowledge the Fall River County agreement to hold the city of Hot Springs harmless for any damages arising from the water pipeline and infrastructure.
Second. Discussion. So this is in front of you, counsel, because the Justice Center, the jail, the county came to a construction meeting that we have every Tuesday with the contractors with a request to run water and sewer underneath the new highway up by the courthouse because the plan for, the current plan from the commissioners is to put the jail on the east side of Highway 385 and the property that they own. And they wanted to tap into our sewer line and our water line. The concern that we had is they were asking the city to make the judgment about the size of those utilities. What size should the sewer line be? What size should the water line be? And I just didn't feel comfortable in putting that responsibility on our folks without knowing the actual need of the building that they would be constructing. So they stepped up and said, okay, if we release you, we'll tell you what size we want you to put in, but if it's not right, we release you from that responsibility, and then the cost is theirs if they need to dig up a brand-new highway to put the right-sized utilities in. So in my mind, that's why this is important for the county to acknowledge that the city put in the utilities, the sized utilities they asked us to put in, not knowing what size the actual architectural spec once they design the building for them.
So does that mean this is a yes on the Justice Center going forward?
Um.
Or they just?
No.
Oh, okay. They're just preparing just in case?
That's my understanding of it, is that it appears they want to have it in the empty lot across from the jailhouse itself. If that's the direction they go, they now have utilities available to that lot.
They were informed, this was at their commission meeting, that pay this much now for those hookups or pay five times more later if they decide after the road's in. So that's why they're doing it now.
So if they're doing it, though, that leads me to believe that there's some yeses coming down the pipeline.
They just don't want to have that option, you know, be less desirable, I guess.
Does that have any effects on our city, our infrastructure, if they start using, tapping into what we have?
Can you talk into the microphone a little more? Travis, please?
I was just wondering if they tap into what we have, is that going to affect, you know, our water and our sewer and all this and that? You know what I mean? Have we done a study on that?
For the city?
Yeah. Okay.
No, it won't affect, you know, anyone else. We have enough capacity.
Okay.
How much of the road are they going to tear up?
If they do.
Well, they won't be tearing any out now.
Are they going to go under?
Right now, because of what we had, the conversations we'd had during the construction meetings, they've gone ahead and run the utilities underneath the road.
Is that that little triangle with all those pipes in it? No, that's not it. That's something different. My mind just blanked. Apologies. I'm in my own world, sir.
I think they did go for the larger pipe because of that, because of this. I think they did go for a larger pipe than what they originally wanted to pay money for.
I just want to feel comfortable with the ideal that if this happens, they're not going to destroy the road that we're working hard to get put in.
That's the reason that this agreement is here, is they understand that if, when the building is actually designed and the architect is calling for a different, a larger-capacity water line and sewer line than the ones that the county told them to put in, that's on them. That they'll have to pay whatever the cost is to either bore under the road or tear it up and put the right size in. I just was not comfortable putting that responsibility on the city because I could see two years down the road, somebody coming down and saying, well, you know, the wrong-sized utilities are there. Who told you you needed that? And it's going to come back that it would be, would have been Tracy Bastian that would have said, you know, to do that. And that's... have said, you know, to do that, and that's not responsible for us to put that on Tracy when he doesn't even know the specs of the building before it's even designed.
All right. All right, thank you, Mayor.
And then, I was going to say, another thing, if they do get a wrong spec on there, the Fall River County, people of Fall River County can ultimately pay for that if they get it wrong, so either way, just.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item C, was removed. Brings us to new business, item D. Can I get a motion to approve a special sale alcoholic beverage license application?
I make a motion to approve the special sale alcoholic beverage license application from HSP Loft Properties LLC for the 309 Family Festival fundraiser to be held at the Centennial Park, 275 Garden Street on 7/7/24.
Second. Discussion? Hello, Brent?
Hey, how's it going? I'll say it if you need me to, but you know where I am. Yep, Brent East Step, 311 North River Street, Hot Springs, South Dakota. Zip code? No? Okay. All right. And, yeah, and I don't know if, not to be unconventional with how y'all do things, but also, item O on there kind of runs congruent with this subject that we're on on D, they're kind of tied hand in hand, but, yeah, we're doing a little family fundraiser, we're going to have a family, that's going to be an annual thing for us. So we'll wind up, just, we've rented out the entire park for that day, July 27th, going to do bounce houses and things like that for the kids, then have the raffle giveaway, which is going to be a couple motorcycles, we're going to give to a couple of the local charities here in town.
The application says the 7th.
It should say 27th, 7/27. Yeah, it says 7/7/24, yeah, if you look down at item O, though, I think she, yeah, I think she forgot the two on that first one. That should be on the 27th.
So the date of the event?
Is the 27th.
Going back up to this one, so this application says the 7th, that's supposed to be the one?
Can I see that?
Yeah, this is the one we're talking about, the special sale alcoholic beverage license application.
Yeah, this should say 27th, uh, it should be exactly like the, uh, the one that I, yeah. It's just one date, it's that, the 27th of, yeah, I'm glad you saw that, or I had it, I had it wrong then. Yeah, no, so we rented the park, should be for the 27th of July.
I better check for park reservations.
Please do. Yes, that would be great.
Do we need an amended motion, then?
Yes, as long as you agree to amend it, you don't need to reiterate that.
Okay. So just approve, approve an amended motion for this particular item, for the date, for the, change the date from the 7th to the 27th of July 24?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
You know, as an attorney, you want to be stopping, though, and I'll check for park reservations.
Yeah, make sure you have the park reserved for the right day.
Any questions for Brent? Thank you for coming down, sir, appreciate it.
Appreciate it very much. Well, I need to stick around for item O, or?
We have to vote, yeah, and yes.
Stay for that?
Yep.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations. New business, item F. Can I get a motion? E, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve schedule 2023 full audit readout and discussion on Monday, June 3rd at 6:00 PM?
Make a motion, schedule 2023 full audit readout and discussion on Monday, June 3rd at 6:00 PM before the regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second. Discussion?
I won't be here that day. Sub meeting? Okay.
So for those on council that have attended these before, this is before the actual council meeting, they give council a more in-depth rundown of the audit, and then they go back over it again during the council meeting, and if there's any other detailed questions, they're free to, they're welcome to, they're happy to answer those also, but.
So is this going to be taped?
Uh, we don't usually tape this.
Okay, okay.
If you have questions, though, after you write your report, I should be able to.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, item F. Can I get a motion to appoint Hal Glanville to the Cemetery Committee?
I make a motion to appoint Hal Glanville to the Cemetery Committee for a five-year term, 2024 to 2028.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
New business, item G. Can I get a motion to appoint Joe Nicosche?
Cotia.
And Luke Broyles to the Historic Preservation Commission. Did I get that right, Joanne?
Yes.
All right.
I make a motion to appoint Joe Nicosche and Luke Broyles to the Historic Preservation Commission for an initial two-year term, 2024 through 2025.
Second. And both Joanne and Luke are here tonight, counsel, so if you have any questions for them, Luke was previously on Historic Preservation, so he has some experience with them. Joanne and I talked about a week and a half ago, and she brings some knowledge and experience to the position. If you'd like to share any of that with counsel, feel free. You're good? All right.
Joe is the one that was here recently, she's taking on the project of replacing all the windows in the Evans Apartments, and she's got a good background, hopefully that will help her through that phenomenally large project.
So we're working on a $6.8 million grant for the Evans to bring it into the modern estate.
Public, can you hear her?
Drop the mic down and get close to it. Is it on?
Yeah, you got to get close to it, though.
I'm all plugged up, sorry. So I am working on a $6.8 million grant for the Evans, it's called a comprehension grant, and it is through HUD, and what it is, is to, it's approximately $80,000 per unit with, in the building, and that is to bring the building up to modernization. It may be, it was built in, like, you know, the, well, it burned down, and then it was built, so the facade is, you know, the only thing original, so it's part of the historic, and so I have to keep on those lines with that and with the windows, and as you know, we had a recent energy audit that says that all those windows should be replaced, so I just want to be part of the building.
Anyone else? Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Stepping up, you and Luke both.
We're getting a lot of interest in our Historic Preservation Group. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations. Uh, new business, item H. Can I get a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $4,357.18 to the wastewater fund?
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $4,357.18 to the wastewater fund, vehicle repairs budget 604-43250-42510 for hail damage repair of the 2018 Chevrolet Silverado, VIN number 9321, caused by the 6122 and 71823 hailstorms. Revenue received from SDPAA claims GC2022-111391 and GC2023-115933.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Getting a motion to approve new business, item I, an automatic budget supplement of $11,520.90 to the general fund?
I make a motion to approve automatic budget supplement of $11,520.90 to the general fund, street lighting damage repairs and maintenance budget 101-43160-42500 for the replacement of a light pole damaged in a vehicle accident on 3/31/2024, revenue received from progressive claim number 24-9276736.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for new business, item J, an automatic budget supplement of $58,395.07?
I'll make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $58,395.07 with $53,395.07.07 to the wastewater fund improvements other than building, 604-43250-43300, and $5,000 to the water fund services and fees, 602-43350-42200 for the Water and Sewer Main Replacement Project Grant, reimbursement received from the CVBG grant number 1919-107-16.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for new business, item K, an automatic budget supplement of $171,651.04 to additional sales tax fund?
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement for $171,651.04 to the additional sales tax fund, $164,639.09 to airport improvements, 212-21200-45420 for construction, and $7,011.07 to services and fees, 212-21200-42200 for construction administration, 10-unit T-hanger, reimbursement revenue of received from AIP grant funding number
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for new business, item L, a travel training request from recreation instructors?
I make a motion to approve the travel training request from recreation instructors, Allison Ritterbush, Taya Ritterbush, Emma Niles, and EPMS Aquatics Director Akoya Zimiga to attend American Red Cross Learn to Swim Program in Shattuck, Nebraska on 5/16 and 5/17. Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, it says here also Gabby Martin. Did I miss something? Here it says Allison Ritterbush, Taya Ritterbush, Emma Niles, and Akoya Zimiga, but on the paperwork, it says Allison Ritterbush and Gabby Martin, swim instructors, recreation. Why is Gabby's name on there? Is she going, or what's the?
She's the department head, but I don't think she's going to the class.
That's, okay, I just was wondering.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Again, I abstain because my daughter's a girl.
Can I get a motion on new business, item M, a travel training request from Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walton and Assistant Finance Officer Ariel Bachman?
Make a motion to approve travel training request from Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walton and Assistant Finance Officer Ariel Bachman to attend the SDML Budget Training in Rapid City, South Dakota on June 18th.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion for new business, item N, to approve a travel training request from Library Director Mary Torones and Librarian Heather Lee?
I make a motion to approve travel training requests from Library Director Mary Torones and Librarian Heather Lee to attend a 2024 Public Library Institute 62267 in Aberdeen, South Dakota, NSU campus.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion on new business, item O, to acknowledge not notification of raffle from HSP Loft Properties?
I make a motion to approve notification of raffle from HSP Loft Properties LLC, doing business as the 309 General, to raise funds for three different organizations, the Hot Springs, South Dakota Angel Fund, Casting Vets, and the Hot Springs Volunteer Fire Department. Two motorcycles with an estimated value of $20,000 will be raffled off. Drawing will be held Saturday, July 27, 2024, at the Family Day fundraiser in Chautauqua Park, or Centennial Park.
Second. Discussion? Hello, Brent? Questions? So the two motorcycles, are they the ones in the window there?
Oh, okay.
Yeah? Who built the custom motorcycle?
Redneck Engineering, that's their moving model, it's a, it's a handicap, I think, they're, they're out of Texas.
Funeral motorcycles is a good-looking one.
Yeah, and, yeah, it's going to be, it's probably going to be pretty crazy, but we're going to make this an annual event, we're only doing 150 tickets on each one of those , so the odds are really good that we'll be able to buy us, so that way we kind of entice and, take a lot of community there for the, so, I'll be building some kits up.
All right.
Will you have representatives from each of the individuals be in there?
I know JR will probably be there for Casting Vets, I have not yet spoken with the Volunteer Fire Department, I did speak with Michael up at the school regarding the Angel Fund, so whether or not they'll be there, I'm not sure, we just designated the, the new Casting Vets was going to be part of it months ago, but we just designated the other two Volunteer Fire Department, who knows, and then, uh, the Angel program was kind of lastly, so, yeah, unless they, you know, tell me otherwise, I would assume somebody would probably be there.
What kind of activities are you going to have?
We're probably going to do some live music on the gazebo, bounce houses, slides for the kids, things like that, we'll have a little stand to sell people's rods, and just probably going all out there, just kind of live the festival today.
And what are the hours going to be?
I think Farmer's Market's there until 1 o'clock, so we're going to take it over at 2, and we'll probably try to wrap up by, I'd say, 9 or 10, I know we've got the park till midnight, but we're thinking that at the, around the, we're going to give the bike away around 7, so we're thinking, parents with kids at parties, returning home after that, anybody else that wants to stay, they can just go across. across the street to the restaurant for the rest of the evening, that would just be even 10 minutes out.
Thank you.
You know, I'd just like to say with all the road work and everything that has pretty nice gone through, it's pretty nice that you step up and do this stuff for the community.
Well, I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't read it on here. Do you have to be present to win?
No, you do not have to be present to win. We're actually still working out all of the final details, because sometimes in those raffles, you'll do a, that's another beautiful thing about the Grace Period, the third day is with the state right now. Some of them, they'll do where they do like an extra $50 charge per ticket to not be present to win, and then that goes to one of the charity funds, just kind of adds to the pot. So we've just kind of been tossing that around, but once we get that into print, yeah, it's kind of a, it's kind of a moot point really, because I don't think we want to require somebody spending that much money on a ticket that they actually have to be there. Of course, we'd like them to be, but.
Well, yeah.
If somebody wins and they're not from this state or this region, I know in some different places they send it to them, will they have to come back to get it or will you?
Not send them.
Oh, come on.
Want to make that, want to make that public, right?
Yes, they will have to, that is, that is pickup home, local, so yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto our committee reports. Our first one, administrative and finance, JR, Melissa?
Admin finance met on May 13, 1:00 here in the Mueller Civic Center. Present were Alderman and Chair JR Huddleston, Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walton, Mayor Bob Nelson, Alderwoman Melissa Niles, Alderman Al Glanville, and guests were Kara Haggen and Gary Telkamp. All business. Additional costs related to water wastewater replacement, suspended sidewalk and other road-related project costs, ongoing review and discussion. Water wastewater replacement construction contract has about $395,000 remaining to be paid. Current contract total is $2,372,846.39. The CDBG grant of $770,000 has been fully utilized. Suspended sidewalk, $1.7 million left on construction contract, $3,965,567.76. Wayfinding plan only, spent $27,181 out of $28,500 contract. Update number two, update city job descriptions, update desired minimum qualification, and add other desired qualification, remove South Dakota DLI requirements, update Southern Hills Golf Course hourly work hours and days, description update to rec director number of hours, title of development coordinator, golf operation manager, and description updates, no report available. Number three, discuss CDL, the training and repayment is as necessary, is their interest. Further discussion necessary to determine if there's a need to expand our current offering from just CDL B to include CDL A, training and replacement. Number four, Fall River County Dispatch Agreement 2025 and beyond, committee proposing a 2% to 3% annual increase for the next three to five years, mayors to meet with Fall River County before 2025 meetings. Number five, surplus auction planning, PD bikes and four wheeler, discussed partnering with Berdine to auction potentially at the end of September, beginning of October, county and school potentially interested in offering items. Rates discussed were 15% on items under $1,000, 10% over $1,000, and 2.75% high bid fee on totals. New business. Mayor items, discuss two interests in the mirror design on the north wall on University Avenue. Number two, city administrator items, city administrator absent from the meeting. Number three, committee member items, discuss the Moolah Theater expense and revenue, this year had a loss of $2,000, last year broke even. Low participation discussed and the possibility of changing the dates next year being considered. Mueller Civic Center interested in continuing with the program. Number four, monthly finance reports. Misty provided overview of the finance report through 4:30 and some highlights from the 2023 annual report. Auto report to be presented by Kettle Thorstensen on June 3 at 6:00 PM, full readout, and then again briefly during the regular scheduled meeting, beginning at 7:00 PM. Ongoing large construction project discussed and an election reminder to get out and vote. Number five, review repayment of expenses, training certification and clothing equipment document, PD chief request, this item seems to have been satisfied, we're going to remove it from the future agenda. Item six, PD request to do weapons upgrade and potential cost review, how to pay it, how to pay for it, should it be budgeted in 2025, to be on the 520 council, and it was approved tonight. Number seven, unbudgeted driveway repair expense at 308 Meadowlark, $7,000 to $8,000. Return to public works for further discussion. Number eight, proposed unbudgeted Magwater application, $8,800 value view, Sixth Street, 1200 Estate, South Garden Street, Mockingbird Drive, and Eli Street. Return to public works for further discussion. Wayfinding update, mayor provided an update at the last council meeting, nothing further to report at this time. Item 10, Kara Haggen Chamber of Commerce storefront pageant. This item was discussed at the beginning of the committee agenda. Kara asked for city financial support sponsorship for a storefront pageant. She mentioned this was done in the past in 2015, with city support and good participation. Pageant to take place June through October 2024-25. Committee recommends supporting this request to provide $2,000 if the storefront pageant is offered to all businesses and not just the Chamber members. Payout totals are forthcoming, will be on the 6324 council agenda for consideration. Item 11, 2025 budget meeting planning either July 23 and 25, or July 30 and August 1. The committee chair, me, advised can only make the July 30, August 1 date, still awaiting other members' responses. Meeting adjourned at 2:47 PM, next meeting is June 10 at 1:00 PM at the Mueller Civic Center, JR Huddleston, Chair.
Melissa, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Nope, it was perfect.
Counsel?
What were those dates again?
They were in my memo last month, July 23 and 25, or July 30 and August 1.
Correct. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Just a comment, the mural is going to go before Parks at the next meeting, just so that there's no misnomers or any misinformation being put out there.
I've got that, one of my three items to update you folks on.
Oh, you do? Okay, the mayor will give one later, thank you.
Anyone else? JR talked about dispatch. I'd reached out to Suge Angie with the county, letting them know that we need to sit down and talk about the dispatch contract, and I see Misty, city administrator, and myself meeting with the folks from the county. They're going to work on who that is and give me some dates so that we can sit down and have that first discussion. I think we're pretty far apart in our numbers. It may be an interesting conversation. Larry was talking about the mural on the north wall at the top of University Avenue. There have been two thoughts about what should be on that mural. I was able to meet with both parties this afternoon and look at a particular design. They're both excited about that design, so they'll continue working on that. The school is offered to put the, kind of final draft on a larger paper, larger printout, so that we can get that ready for Parks for your first meeting in June. Let's see if you folks, you know, want to pass that design on to the full council. If you pass it on, then we can have something in front of council for our June 17 meeting, for council to approve the mural. We're making good progress, I think we're almost there. The $2,000 that JR was talking about. It's the storefront pageant to put money towards helping, encouraging folks to spruce up their storefronts. If council doesn't have any objections to having that $2,000 on the next agenda, then we'll put that in front of you for you to vote on. Just looking to see if you have any concerns with the city putting $2,000 into a competition for all businesses in town.
Isn't something that the Chamber of Commerce would do instead of the city?
Chamber of Commerce is involved in it.
They're involved?
They're putting some money forward.
And are we, okay, all right, TK, yeah, okay.
Prizes will be awarded, I believe about seven different prizes.
One hundred dollars worth?
Yep, going to be awarded.
I got one observation or comment about if it's still on the same timeframe we're talking about here. As far as the mural's going, I know I'd mentioned to you about slipping some buffalo in there for showing school spirit, since the school will be helping out with the big picture, so I'm kind of hoping that will stay in there, maybe, maybe not, I'm not, I don't know. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, JR, Melissa. Airport advisory, Bill?
Next airport advisory meeting is Thursday, June 6, 8:30 at the airport. Also would like to let council know that the tee hanger final inspection has been scheduled for Monday, June 17 at 11:00 AM.
Will there be a report that night then? Will there be a report that night? We have a city council meeting that day?
Uh, yes. Hopefully, we'll have a report. Have an observation, anyway.
Is that June 17?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Travis?
The Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District Board meeting was supposed to have met in May, I apologize if I forget what date that was supposed to be, but it was moved, that meeting has been moved to Thursday, June 6, 2024 at 7:00 PM here at the Mueller Center, and I imagine we'll probably meet again in July to get back on track. So we missed the May meeting, and that's moved to June 6.
Thank you. Historic preservation, Deborah?
They'll be meeting again June 5, 5:00 PM here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met on May 9, 2024 at noon at the Evans Plunge. Present were myself as committee chair, members Chris Hansen, Tom Nas, and Mara Smith. Updates, Chris announced that she was leaving at the end of June. Swim lessons will be May 28 through June 27, with 50 children registered so far. We have four people signed up for WSI certification, Akoya Zimiga, Allison Ritter Bush, Emma Niles, and Taya Ritter Bush that we approved tonight. Equipment updates, new steam generator is up and running, hot tubs are functional and may need breaker boxes, HVAC units are ordered, working on getting the outdoor pool open for Memorial Day. The front of the building still needs new siding and/or paint. Double doors at the north end of the pool need work, perhaps a roll-up door in the future. No monthly incidents were reported. Under other, we have three new guards onboard with two new slide guard candidates. Janitorial staff is consistent at this time with three, with new people at the front desk. May is busy with school buses bringing students in from other areas. City crews have moved the picnic tables from the old food truck area to the grassy area adjacent to the parking lot. Kudos go out to Tom for testing the alarm system. Issues were discovered with a tech scheduled to come out to address them. The next meeting will be June 13, 2024, noon at the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs, and we adjourned at 12:29 PM.
Any questions for Linda?
Yeah, Linda, just an observation on things that y'all are fixing down there. Has anybody considered that dock on the north side, it has damage on the east side of it, in the concrete, and you know, when it rains, it's going to start leaking into the ground there. Has that been brought up also?
And that was on the north side?
North side of the building, yes.
North side of the building? No, nobody has mentioned that.
Okay. Just, just an observation.
The concrete has a crack?
There's a big enough crack there where you can, it's, yeah, you can see, it's weird leaking inside there.
Hmm, okay.
Big holes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? Thank you, Linda. Parks Recreation Beautification, Larry?
Next meeting will be June 5 at 2:00 PM here at the Mueller Center, everybody's invited. I also want to make a comment here. It was never brought up at the last meeting, but there were 24 participants for the Missoula Play, which was a pretty good turnout, so just wanted to bring, put that out there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Planning and zoning, Deborah?
Planning and zoning met May 15, 6:00 PM at City Hall. Present were Donald Stad, Dwight Weena, James Forbord, Christine Heidebrink, Wayne Higeman. Staff were Scott Sogi and myself. Guests were Joe Allen, Stephanie Keller, Robert Parker, Dwayne Whitney, and Patrick Campbell. Under new business, which I just slipped wrong, there was bypass lot line revision brought forward, shamanic lot line revision of Lot 2SR and Lots S-1R. Dwight questioned access to the adjacent property, revised tract B, so the revision was placed on hold for access verbiage to be added to the plat from Anderson's Engineers. Grandview Mobile Trailer Park, A, tiny home setback update, nothing has changed, so the tiny home is still sitting where it was placed prior to the required survey. B, park expansion with two new entrances. This is not a public alley, the work is all on private property, so the city is not involved in the creation of a driveway utilizing existing curb driveway aprons. That's up towards the far point before you turn onto the bypass, and they want to put some camping camper spots in the back part behind the first line of trailers. Number three, the Millbrant Somerville Street Vacating, this has been on the agenda for several months. This is the old Lucy's Dewdrop or the Dewdrop Drive-In. There's now no conflicts, so Don Olsted stated that the owners may now start the vacation process to include the. the owners may now start the vacation process to include the easement process. They want to get rid of Somerville Street that's platted there between the Drive-In and the historic motel. But the big problem was is that one of the pins was in the middle of the driveway giving access to the motel all these years, so that all had to be worked out before this is all approved. Number four, Keller use on review. This is 606 and 610 Baltimore. The planning commission felt there was no conflict issues with the request for a use on review to use the structures as business offices. So there's two little houses there that have been rentals, and she's considering using one as a realty office. And so she'll be going through that process. And then number five, Marchant Carport. Jay and Laura Marchant requested a setback variance to erect a carport in front of their garage. The house sits on a corner lot, so the setbacks are 25 feet on each side. The carport would be six feet into the side yard setback, and the setback variance was not allowed. Maverick Tire lot line revision, approved motion by James and seconded by Christine. That was what we just stopped tonight, so apparently this is where Maverick Tires wants to build their new building back on this property. And so that apparently has to be taken care of before that's going to go through, but it was approved at the time during the meeting. Joe Allen, Fall River County, and Hot Springs Industrial Park. There was discussion about the present use of the storage facility and the use desired by a potential buyer. The commission felt the property and its use is compatible with the zoning. And I believe the commission wants to trade a storage building that's up behind Sunny's in the old industrial park for the heating, building storage that's behind Equalization, Department of Equalization, where they want to put the Justice Center. So they want to do a trade with Bill's Heating for, up behind Sunny's, and then Bill's Heating would give that building, that would then be torn down for the potential Justice Center. The Dwayne Whitney Storage Units at 1705 University Avenue, which is the building that Barnyard Vet just moved out of across from the high school. The request was to be able to set up storage units on the property and to see if they are allowed within the city ordinances. The style of units are modular units that do not involve foundations. The area is zoned mixed use, and the storage units are not allowed. Storage such as garages or sheds are allowed as long as it is in conjunction with residents on the property. The commission did not feel this was a fit for the property. And then number nine, River Mountain Construction, Jenny Fisher setback discussion. No action was involved as the Golf Course Architectural Board needs to look at the details and cast their opinions and decisions and then be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then Barn Owl Lot Line Revision. The lot line revision request needs to have a detailed drainage plan for the property to be presented for the commission's review, no action was taken. And that's on the property between Dakota Interior Stone, I can't remember the right name of that business, and the new Acutters Building. There's four parcels in between there with a little cul-de-sac platted, and they want to take that, and it's called Barn Owl Drive. So they want to vacate Barn Owl Drive. Well, it's a lot line revision is what they're working on at the moment. But like I said, one person is going to own like the lower right quarter, and then the other three that wrap around and up behind are going to be owned by someone else. And so, but the drainage needs to be addressed and drawn up before the Planning and Zoning will approve it. And the meeting adjourned at 8:00 PM. The next meeting is usually scheduled on the third Wednesday, but that's going to be a holiday of June 19, so we're moving it to the next Wednesday, June 26, and we're maintaining the 6:00 PM time at City Hall.
Any questions for Deborah?
Yes, Deborah. Were they going back to that trailer court where they were going to park those motorhomes? Is that access through the alley?
It's really not even an alley.
I realize that, is that how they're going to access in there?
Pardon me?
Is that where they expect the motorhomes to access through that trailer? Or, I mean, through the alleyway? Thank you.
It's on private property, so we really don't have, say...
The Millbrant Street Vacating. It says we took care of that access issue that's been taken care of. Are we abandoning a section of the right of way or are we taking the whole street and vacating it?
Not the whole street, it's only going down to like Lot 10. If I had the map in front of me.
So we are going to abandon a section of it?
Yeah, but we're maintaining the utility easement that's on it.
Deborah had mentioned that Dwight had approached Planning and Zoning about his storage building proposal. He's asked to be put on the agenda for the June 3 council meeting to share his proposal with you, and I believe that Area went ahead and forwarded everybody on council his email and the design for the building. Deborah had mentioned that it doesn't fit our ordinances, but he still wants to talk to council about considering waiving that particular ordinance. If he shows up on June 3, he'll make his case, and we'll chat about that.
I believe the ordinance states that private storage units are allowed, or you know, residential units are allowed, but not commercial.
I think you'd have to change the ordinance too. I don't know that you have the authority to change your ordinances for certain scenarios.
Yes, it would.
Thank you, Deborah.
I was just wondering what's the difference between residential and commercial storage units?
The shed with the house.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, all right.
Public Safety, Bill, JR?
Next public safety meeting is Thursday, June 6, 2:00 PM, Mueller Center Conference Room.
Thank you. Public Works, Bill, Hal?
Next Public Works meeting is Tuesday, May 29, 1:00 PM, Mueller Center Conference Room.
Thank you. Southern Hills Golf Course, we met on May 14. That's when the report was done, I think it was 13th that we met. I was present, Superintendent Happy was there, clubhouse manager Joe Lowe, Collette Miller, and Dave Merrill from the committee. Pretty short meeting. The maintenance staff's main focus is on course setup and turf recovery from the winter. Jason gave an update on the retaining wall project, it's mostly done. They're laying down sod in front of the wall. The landscaping, topsoil, and HVAC units still need to be put on the top of the wall. Jill's report from the clubhouse. Rounds for the year, they're currently at 1,398 total rounds for 2024. And at the same time in 2023, they had approximately 602 rounds at the time. So they've seen an increase of almost 100% in the number of rounds at the same time. The seasons passes for 2024 are at 140, they're down from last year, but they still have a couple more months to see those seasons pass increase. There has been an increase in the sale of punch cards, with a lot of those increases coming from out-of-town folks. So got a good start on the year, and we'll hope that the trend continues. Any questions? So, no city administrator report, Misty, do you have a report?
I'd just like to remind you to let me know if you're interested in attending the SML Budget Planning Training in Rapid City on the 18th, and then also please let me know of the planning bids that you prefer, so we can make sure that as many people are there as possible. If I don't hear anything, I'm going to schedule for the one for JR. He's going to get goosebumps, so.
So the budget meeting in Rapid is what day?
June 18.
Misty, I would like to go, but I might be recovering from surgery, so.
So I'll put you on my no side, thank you for that information.
All right, we have an executive session that we need to go into, so I'll defer my comments until the next council meeting. So if we could get a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion we go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-23 legal.
Did you pick one of them?
I don't know, was it Larry?
We'll let Hal have it. All right, Melissa wants it.
Give it to Melissa.
Give it to Melissa.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, and for the public, there may be possible action after executive session. So we'll take a brief pause, and then we'll see everybody in executive session, and if our attorneys could join us.
I'd have to bring them in here.
I would?
I was complimenting you.
Oh, thank you.
Let's go ahead and reconvene at 9:18, we'll round up. And I believe JR, you have a motion that you would like to make?
I do, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion in reference to the Vodega Building, 609 through 611 North River Street, to authorize the city attorneys to draft a letter to the listing agent Realtor Century 21, Risa Rutz, and copying owner Lance Redinger, and instructing and informing them of city position interest regarding the building.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, so we need a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn for this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Have a good evening, everyone.